Could we have roll call, please, Michael Ann?
Mayor Mance. Mayor Protem Sagata.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
Commissioner Schuster.
Present.
Could you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I thank you all for showing up to our regular meeting tonight. This time, we'd like to take time to notice some achievements of some of our citizens and our fellow commissioners. Mr. Chavez.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we'd like to present this plaque to Mayor Sandra Mance. Sandy has been a commissioner for the last eight years, and she's also the mayor. So those of you that have served on the commission before, you know that it's taxing at times, and she's done a good job for us. So Sandy, we have a plaque here that we're going to be presenting to you. And it says, "Presented by the City of Raton to Sandra Mance in recognition of your service as commissioner and mayor from 2010 till 2018. We thank you for your service."
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Cindy wants to say something to...
Lindy.
All right, Lindy.
Yes. Sandy, I want to thank you not only for your service, but also for your inspiration. You inspired me to run for a commission position, and you've inspired other women to take active roles in the community. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and please know that you have made a positive difference in our community.
Thank you very much.
And Sandy, I would just like to state the same. You know, we've been through some interesting times here on this commission, and I'd like to say, though, the last four years have been a pleasure as well to serve with you, and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Neil. I would like to say that it has been a privilege and a pleasure to serve with my fellow commissioners as well as work with Scott and Michael Ann. I appreciate everything that everyone has done. Lindy, for the Community Kitchen and the U-Rock Award in Ron, and Jacomo for the work with economic development and getting the Ross, the Aviation Project here, the Aviation, and for Neil for filling in for me so many times when I've been ill. I greatly appreciate you all taking charge and going ahead and getting things done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we've got Michael Ann's got a couple of announcements here for us.
Yes, I just...
Do we have something else?
Well, we did. We'd have recognition of visitors. I don't know if anybody would like to address them.
Okay. Would anybody like to address the commission at this time? I was going to do that under...
Oh, yes, children.
That's all right. That's all right. Okay. So we'll move on to Michael Ann then.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
I just wanted to remind everybody that the municipal election will be Tuesday, which is March 6th. And so for anybody interested in earlier absentee voting, they can still come to City Hall. We are doing early voting. As of 5:00 today, the total for early and absentee was 140. And if you'd like to early vote, you can come until Friday at 5:00 p.m. And then 5:00 p.m. is also the last opportunity for us to issue an absentee ballot by mail. So I would just urge anybody that's kind of waiting to do absentee, you do run the risk of not getting the application in time and then turning it around in the mail. However, if we do get the absentee ballot by 5:00, the absentee voters have until 7:00 p.m. on election night to actually hand-deliver those ballots. Also, our newly-elected officials after the election is official, will do a swearing-in reception here in the commission chambers, and we'll do that on March 12th. That's the Monday following the election at 5:30 p.m. So we do invite the public to attend that as well.
All righty, thank you. Okay, our next regular commission meeting, and it will be Tuesday, March 13th, 6:00 p.m. Right here in the chambers. We have a notice of potential quorum. A quorum of city commissioners may attend the New Mexico Municipal League District III meeting to be held in Santa Rosa on March 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Blue Hole Conference Center on 1085 Blue Hole Road. Now, is there anyone in the public out there that would like to address the commission at this time? All right, see, now we'll move on to reports from commissioners. Raton Water Works, Commissioner Chavez.
Yes, thank you. The Raton Water Board met on the 20th, and we discussed the Lake Maloya is currently at one, is only a one inch below spillway. Eagle Nest is holding 42,000 acre-feet of water, so we'll have our full allotment for the city even if the snowpack doesn't improve. We discussed the disinfection byproduct problems, and they're being corrected. We have been getting info out on the upcoming GRT vote for the upcoming election in the form of flyers and signs, and Mr. Campbell has been at the radio 77 times. No, that's not right. I'm sorry. The UMWA contract negotiations have been completed, and I think they've reached an agreement. And the Water Department received a clean, unmodified audit. Kudos to Geneva and her crew. That's all I have.
You bet. Thank you. Raton Public Service, Commissioner Jacomo.
The Raton Public Service Board of Directors met on January 29th, 2018, 5:30 p.m. The RPS Board had an election for officers for 2018. The results were as followed. President was elected. Kathy McCurry was re-elected as president. Frank Ferry, vice-president. Dave Swanson, treasurer. Secretary is Jessica Gonzalez. Jessica Gonzalez is the newly-hired office manager slash bookkeeper for RPS Services. Teddy Guada has been promoted to supervisor, line supervisor, replacing Dave Pencino, who was stated last meeting. That he's been promoted to assistant RPS general manager. Sandy Chavez has been appointed as RPS general manager. Sandy Chavez presented the financial and statistical information for November, December. The joint special meeting of Raton City Commission and the Raton Public Service was held on February 20th at 5:00 p.m. The meeting was held to review and approve the Second Amendment to the Twin Eagle Resource Amendment and the RPS Power Sales Agreement. That's all we've got.
Thank you. Senior Center Board, Commissioner Chavez, would you like to defer...
I'd like to defer to you, please.
Sure. We met last Tuesday. We discussed the initial budget for the upcoming fiscal year 19. We're looking at probably about a $1.3 million budget. That's just in the initial stages. The HVAC project is now complete. We have controllable heat in the senior center, end zones. We're still working out some bugs. It was a little warm in spots today, but we feel pretty good about that. Having an outstanding year, it looks like, with delivery and congregant meals, we're going to serve close to 110,000 meals this year. So it's, we're having a real good year. That's all we got. So Planning and Zoning Commission, Commissioner Schuster.
There's been no recent meeting. There's no report.
Okay, how about Housing Authority?
Housing Authority met on February 20th at noon, and they've had some additional security cameras installed, both in the Raton and Maxwell housing area. Colleen also went to an IRS training, and she's recruiting high school students. They will be assisting individuals from the entire community with filling out tax forms for those who have an income of $58,000 or less. So if they, anyone needs to, needs help filling out their IRS forms, they can call 445-8021 to get that assistance.
All right.
Aside from that, they have, their audit was complete, and there's no other new business.
All righty, thank you. ETZ Zoning Commission, myself have not met, so there is no report. North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, Mayor Mance.
No report.
No report. Library Advisory Board, Commissioner Jacomo.
There was no meeting held this month. The next scheduled meeting is set for March 20th at 5:30 p.m.
ETZ Zoning Authority, Mayor Mance.
No report.
Financial Advisory Board, Commissioner Chavez.
Financial Advisory Board met yesterday, the 26th. We reviewed the financials and approved the presentation of the financials to the City Commission tonight.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our committee reports. Move on to the business portion of the meeting. Item 7A, approval of the February 13th, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes and the February 20th, 2018 special joint meeting minutes. Those were provided in your packets. If you've had time to take a look at them.
I found no additions or deletions. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item B, deliberate an act on public celebration permits for Raton Main Street Spring for Hops and Vine tasting event on April 14th, 2018. That includes the Sierra Blanca Brewing Company, Black Mesa Winery LLC, Balzano Vineyard Winery, and New Mexico Cider. Mr. Barry.
Mayor Protem, Mayor and Commissioner, this is an event that has been held annually for a number of years. We do have Diana Sanchez present from Raton Main Street, and I would ask Diana Sanchez and Brenda Ferry, I'm sorry I walked in, to come forward and provide us more detailed information on the event. But certainly, we would recommend approval of the permit for the event. It's been a great event for Raton and for downtown Raton specifically over a number of years.
So as Scott said, this is an annual event. This is an event that we fundraise for our own organization costs to, you know, cover things that we don't have grant money for, and office supplies, trips that we need to go on, meetings that we have to attend, and things like that. It has been very successful. It's growing. We're excited this year because we have two breweries and two wineries. In the last several years, we've only had one of each. And thanks to some of our new board members, Katie and Jessica, they actually went on their own little wine and beer tasting and found these. And so it's going to be real interesting. We're going to have some food pairing with the beer and the wine this year instead of our, just our random table of hors d'oeuvres. So we're going to do that and have some pianist play. So it'll be held at the Raton Museum as always, and so we just ask for the city's support.
All righty, thank you. Any questions for...
No questions.
Diana.
I see that all the paperwork and the liability and the alcoholic gaming permits are all in order, so I make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the permit for Raton Main Street. Is there any further discussion?
Actually, it's individual permits.
Individual permits.
I mean, you could probably approve them as one motion, but it's each company has...
Did not notice that.
They've prepared their own public celebration applications. Those will be submitted to alcohol and gaming tomorrow after the election.
Yes, they are individual.
They are. Ms. Chavez.
We did provide the layout of the event. Brenda gave us that, and their certificate of insurance for Main Street.
We have our liability insurance.
I'd like to amend the motion that I made to include that the Sierra Blanca Brewing Company permit, the Black Mesa Winery. Do we need to do them one at a time, or can we do all four of them as one?
You might probably combine them all, right?
I think you can do, as long as it's clear we're approving four permits, you can do that in one action.
Yes. The approval of the four permits, Sierra Blanca Brewing, Black Mesa Winery, Balzano Vineyard Winery, and the New Mexico Hard Cider. So I make a motion that we approve that.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Chavez, an amended motion to approve the permits to include all four of the...
Both entities.
Entities. Okay. So you're seconding, I'm taking that, Lindy.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the amended motion. Any further discussion? Hey, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries. Item C, deliberate an act on lodger's tax recommendations. Mr. Barry.
Mayor Protem, Mayor and Commissioner, in your packets, you have a memo from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. We did take note of your wishes, I think, the last time, and I tried to arrange members of the board to be present and address the commission, and we just did not get that accomplished for these purposes. But the memo tells you that the board met on February 21st, and they have forwarded three recommendations to the commission for your consideration. Each of these three is for an award of, I would believe, contingency funds from lodger's tax, is that correct? To...
Well, this one's actually from this line item.
Okay, so correct. And it says there that there is a recommendation, and we can go through these individually, that $10,810 be awarded to the Raton Beautification Coalition to purchase items for the Raton Flower Festival. The expense would go to cover the cost of hanging flowers, banners, LED lights, supplies to secure the items to light poles, and that would actually come from the Parks and Recreation line item, promotional portion of lodger's tax. Then in addition, we have two additional recommendations. They recommended the commission that $500 be awarded to High Altitude Vitae Fitness for advertising food and prizes for their upcoming bench press competition, be held April 14th. That's contingency fund. And then also $1,241.91 to Raton Main Street to help pay for Executive Director Brenda Ferry to attend the national conference in Kansas City. That will be March 24th to the 29th, also contingency fund, and Brenda and Raton Main Street are present. So I think the commission can consider those three recommendations individually or as a group.
I think, why don't we take them individually, don't you think?
Okay.
I would talk about them. First up on the board is the recommendation of $10,810 to be given to the Raton Beautification Coalition to purchase items. Do we have anybody here to represent it? Mr. Chatterley.
Evening, Mayor, members of the commission. I am the unofficial official spokesperson for the Raton Beautification Coalition. The coalition is made up of members of Park and Rec Department, Grow Raton, Raton Chamber of Commerce, Center for the State of the Community, and who did I miss? Main Street. Raton Main Street. And so it is the goal of this coalition to, as its name is, beautify Raton. The plan this year is to put banners and hanging pots on the historical lamp posts that are on Second Street, the avenues, Rio Grande, Cook and Park towards First Street, and then along First Street. Those will be 46-inch banners on every other lamp post, and then the opposite, the opposing lamp post will have the hanging flowers. And then on South Second and Clayton Road, where the high school puts up their homecoming flags, we'll have a similar flag that'll mimic the design that we have on the big banners downtown to unify the town with this beautification project. And then we're taking all the events that are going on throughout the summer and we're marking them as the Summer of Color. And so the plan is to have everything go up on particular days, so overnight, the city is transformed and beautified. It corresponds with the events that are going on through the summer, and then sometime towards the middle end of September, everything comes down. The Summer of Color is over until next year, where we do it all again. The plan is to, of course, to expand on the number of banners and the number of lights and the number of flowers to gradually increase our push and our beautification. And so the funding goes, as requested, towards the banners, the lights, the flowers. There was concern about the watering of the flowers, and I think we've been able to address that, working with Workforce Solutions, on being able to hire a part-time crew that will be able to water the plants. And we think we've also been able to incorporate that if businesses want to participate in this Summer of Color and buy their own plants and put them outside their business, that our watering crew will be able to water their plants also to help facilitate everybody participating and making a better Summer of Color, and all for 2018 anyway.
Cool. Are there any questions for Mr. Chatterley?
Now, the questions I had, and I talked to some of you about this before, is about how the watering was going to be taken care of. And you answered it correctly, and I think it'll work.
I think it'll work.
So I've observed the ones that are in Vancouver and the ones that are in Alaska, and it's quite impressive to have those hanging on the light poles. It really is.
Yes.
And that's a start.
It's a start. That's what we're going for.
I'll make a motion to approve the lodger's tax recommendation to give Raton Beautification Coalition the amount requested of $10,810.
Okay, we have a motion to, and we have a second, motion and a second to approve the recommendation, Louis Lindy, from the lodger's tax board for the amount of $10,810. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you.
Recommendation number two, the lodger's tax board's recommending $500 be given to High Altitude Vitae Fitness for the purchasing of food from prizes for their upcoming bench press competition. Don't have anybody here for that. Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Barry, do you know much about this?
Mayor Protem, I was not in attendance at the lodger's tax board meeting, and, you know, we would like to have probably some more information from members of that, and we'll continue to work on that. But I really don't have a lot of...
Other than what?
Information. I think that the question has been, can we use this type of funding for things like prize money or food? You know, advertising clearly is in bounds, and, you know, I'm not sure on the prizes and food. It has been done, and it's been talked about at lodger's tax board. I think that in our discussion, we talked about going back to Municipal League or the New Mexico Hospitality Association and get some expertise to come to Raton again and provide that training on the statute regarding lodger's tax, both promotional and non-promotional. So I think that's, that would be something that we'd want to arrange before we get our budget finalized and go into the new fiscal year. So we'll be working on that step.
Okay. I think we should make a motion to table this until such time that we can talk to them and find out. As you recall, we had a little bit of a confrontation with the rodeo money being used for that, so I would like to get a little more information before we act on this.
I'll take in that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to table this recommendation, or how about postpone this recommendation?
Or postpone it, not table.
Yeah.
I make, I redo it.
Okay, let's make...
Just postpone it.
We have a, then Don, would you second that?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have amended the motion to postpone this recommendation until we can get some further information regarding what we can do officially with this, and hopefully get some information from them, what this is, and what kind of event, and what kind of crowd we're going to see in that, and how it benefits us. Is there any other further discussion?
Nothing here.
So all in favor? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries to postpone this. Item 3 is a recommendation from the lodger's tax board that $1,241.91 be given to Raton Main Street to help pay for the executive director, Brenda Ferry, to attend the national conference in Kansas City. And we got Diana here.
First of all, we did not send Brenda last year. It is required that our executive director go at least every other year for Raton Main Street to maintain our national accreditation, which in turn allows us to apply for the different kind of grant monies and more grant monies if we're nationally accredited. And so our budget didn't quite allow us to send her last year, but we do have to send her this year. We are not asking for the full amount, for the full expense. We're asking for a little over 50% of the cost to send her. And she will be learning, you know, how to market our district in Raton. We also will be having the summer quarterly, the state summer quarterly here in Raton in August, which will bring about 200 people to town. And so we're just asking for some help from the city to help us fund her trip.
Is there any other questions for Diana?
I have a question.
Okay, Sandy.
Did you not budget this expenditure?
Yes, we do, Sandy, but our friends of Main Street Drive is, didn't gain us as much money last year as we had hoped, and, you know, we're just starting that again this year. And like I said, we're not asking for the full amount. We're asking for a little over 50%.
Did you catch all that, Sandy?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other further comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll second.
To the lodger's tax to give the Main Street the money requested.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrying none, motion carries. Thank you. Too tricky with that. Deliberate an act on the MOU between the City of Raton and Raton Little League. Mr. Barry.
Mayor Protem, Mayor and Commissioner, you have in your packet a memorandum of understanding of the City of Raton and Raton Little League. This would be an annual agreement that we have done for many years. Raton Little League has operated on the fields, talking about the Bradley Field, Ragsdale Field, Selly Romero Field, and Jim Wade Softball Field, as well as the Raton Soccer Field for Little League operations of all ages and for girls and boys. As you know, it's happened for many years in Raton. There's really no change from previous years in the MOU. It's been a great partnership, and not only great for the youth of Raton, but we do get get other teams traveling to Rattone, coming to the town. And I think all around, it's a good thing. We'd recommend approval of the MOU. Would you have a representative of Rattone Little League, if you have any questions?
Corey, would you like to say anything?
Actually, no, we actually are ahead of game this year. Last year, we were really late.
Right.
So, we're doing our best to get the Little League's name backwards, should be as far as representing the City of Rattone. The main Little League officer for, in Taos, Jim Fanbro, stated he liked our facility as far as how our fields were set up. And he mentioned that he would like to hold a state tournament here.
Cool.
So, we're in the process of getting that set up with the plans for that, which we might be able to be approved for every year. So, just the way the setup is, they appreciate how that is. So, which would bring...
Sure.
...the tournament every year.
Cool. Wasn't it last year or the year before that we had it here?
Yeah, we had it here and that was...
It packed the city for a whole week.
Yeah, it's five or six days. So, this year, I think it's in Las Vegas. And it's, every five years, it switches to Las. But the state tournament, which is after the regional tournament, we put bids in for that. So, we're looking into that, see what we can do to bring that here.
Cool.
Make a motion to approve MOU between the City of Rattone and Rattone Little League.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Second?
I'll second.
I beat you. We have a motion and a second to approve the MOU between Rattone Little League and the City of Rattone. Any further discussion?
This is a question I think I ask every year. They're saying they're going to intend to use the soccer field through August 26th and the soccer program starts in July.
Yes, the soccer field is used for T-ball and T-ball runs, is the shortest league of our system. So, it's just put in with the other fields. We'll be done with the T-ball field by June.
Okay, thank you.
Also, we do have a copy of the certificate of insurance. You don't have a copy in your packet, but they did provide that to us.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Item E, deliberate an act on appointment to Rattone Water Works Board. Mr. Berry or Mr. Campbell, either one?
Mayor Protem, I'll start out and I would like to call Dan Campbell for to provide information on the item. But we do have an opening on the Rattone Water Board. We had requested applications from the public. We do have, I believe we have one application, correct? And it's from Alan Litchfield. Commissioners, I think, we're very fortunate to have Mr. Litchfield reapply to the board. He has extensive knowledge of not only Rattone's water rights, but Rattone's water facilities or long-range plan in the area of water supply, water resource, water treatment. As you know, we have a large project scheduled coming up during the next year or year and a half at the Rattone Water Treatment Plant. And it's good to have this kind of knowledge and this kind of continuity on the board. Mr. Campbell, I don't know if you could come up and talk about the application and what the Rattone Water Board is planning.
Well, at this point, I should say, he's been an excellent board member. He's got the board chairman for 15 years and the extensive knowledge of our water rights, which has been litigated multiple times over the years, but we actually have been at this point. Have done some capital initiatives before this commission and then about a decade ago, an Eaglesness issue, there was about a year and a half negotiation that he was involved in to where I would actually say, you know, that we'd definitely like to go forward. I've worked with him for my full 27-year career.
When we go down to Santa Fe to talk to him on water things, he's just well-known and he fits right in. So, he's an excellent choice for this and I'd like to retain him too.
Alrighty.
I too would like to add that I feel that F.L. is probably the most knowledgeable person that sits on the water board at this time and I'm strongly in favor of his seat being renewed.
Alrighty, thank you Sandy.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? Entertain a motion.
He's wanting to do it?
So moved.
I'll second it.
I'm assuming he wants to do it with the application turned in, right?
He did apply, yes.
Not backdooring him, okay. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the application of Mr. Litchfield. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You can tell when he's still on the job. Okay, item F, deliberate an act on bid award for 2001 CAT 816F landfill compactor. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protem, Mayor and Commission, under F and G, we are going to talk about a couple of pieces of equipment that we would like to surplus out. We're coming to the commission for your consideration and approval of the sale of these pieces of equipment. I have Jason Phillips, our Public Works Director, on hand to give you detailed information on this proposal.
Mayor Commission, under item F in your packet, you have a recommendation from me for the sale of this CAT 816F compactor. As you remember, a few meetings back, it was listed as surplus property. The advertisement process was followed and this piece of equipment, we sought as many bids as possible. We did only get the one bid for $105,000. But we attempted to market this to almost every New Mexico landfill, Southern Colorado landfill, as well as we used solid waste engineers and waste management companies to try to generate some interest in it. The nuts and bolts of it is it's an older unit and it's a smaller unit. The 816 has been eclipsed by an 824 model and most modern landfills are larger than ours was. So, it didn't generate a lot of interest, but it generated what I feel is a very favorable bid, higher than I anticipated we would get for this unit. So, I would recommend that we award it. The bid amount is $105,000 and it does exclude broker receipts tax as it is a non-taxable entity that has proposed this bid.
Any questions for Mr. Phillips?
Just add that this bid was submitted by San Luis Valley Regional Solid Waste Authority.
Okay. Is that now the motion?
Ah, yes.
Okay, the motion to approve bid award to, for the 2001 CAT 816F landfill compactor?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the bid proposed by San Luis Valley Regional Solid Waste Authority for $105,000 for the compactor. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, Mr. Phillips, since you're still there?
Not quite as valuable a piece of equipment. This is a 1979 Ford Valley 100 flatbed truck, in non-running condition. It again was advertised a minimum of two times and has generated a bid of $475 plus applicable broker receipts tax, submitted by RW Buck Construction. Not a lot of people in the market for a 1979 Ford flatbed that doesn't run. So, we again recommend award of this as we're just kind of looking to clean house a little bit.
I hear you. Is there any further questions or anything for Mr. Phillips? We entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the bid of $450 for the 1979 Ford.
About $475.
Oh, sorry, $475.
Alright, we have a motion to accept the bid.
I'll second it.
And a second, to accept the bid of $475 from RW Buck Construction for the flatbed Ford. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Item H, deliberate an act on Resolution 2018-12, application for fiscal year 2018-19 Municipal Arterial Program, the MAP funding to NMDOT District 4 for the Fifth Street resurfacing project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protem, Mayor and Commission, it's the time of year when we receive a request for applications from Department of Transportation for their local government road fund. There are two funds that we are eligible as a municipality for application to this program for funding. Municipal Arterial Program is item H and then under item I, we'll talk about their Cooperative Agreement Program. Both programs provide 75% of the funding if an application is accepted and that it requires that the municipality commit to 25% of the funding. So, what I brought to the commission for your consideration, this is Resolution 2018-12 in which you would commit to your share, the 25% of the project. I have looked at eligible projects that, of course, MAP stands for Municipal Arterial. It would require that we do improvements to an arterial type of roadway and that's fairly limited as to the number of those. In the past, we've worked on such projects as Tiger Drive, the MAP program that funded improvements to that street and also First Street in the downtown area. We have recently been awarded funds for Hospital Drive. That work is about 60% through the design process. We anticipate that the work would be constructed this summer. And so, we've evaluated the potential for a good MAP application. And what I bring to you would be the resurfacing of Fifth Street. So, we arrived at Fifth Street because it really has not had work over probably the last 25 years. It's an arterial in the nature that it's used heavily by schools, transportation between our schools, specifically the high school, but also the middle school. Serves a large residential area, serves our minors' long-term care facility. And a portion of Fifth Street at one time was a DOT designated route as we state in the resolution. It was at one time State Highway 476. And at some point in the past, New Mexico DOT had performed what they call a road exchange agreement in which they generously give this street to the City of Rattone for you to maintain. Now, I don't know what they mean by a road exchange agreement because we didn't give them anything. We just accepted that portion of South Fifth Street. But we would go back to the DOT now and remind them that this has been an arterial designated DOT route in the past and we would ask for $300,000 for resurfacing of the street. We would designate the entire length of Fifth Street from Nevada Avenue to Tiger Drive. So, that's a rather lengthy stretch of road. There is one minor drainage improvement that we would like to make that would consist of concrete valley gutter and the resurfacing would likely consist of chip seal again on the street. So, this is a recommendation from me to the commission for your consideration. We would express our interest in applying for Fifth Street as our project. Applications are due in early March.
You did say from Nevada to Tiger Drive?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Any other questions for Mr. Berry?
None.
Alright, seeing no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Make the motion.
I will move the application of fiscal year 2018-2019 Municipal Arterial Program for Fifth Street.
Alright, thank you Sandy.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, could we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Mayor Vance?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes. Motion carries. Item I, Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protem, Mayor and Commission, similar to the previous item, this would be your authorization for application for street improvements under the DOT Cooperative Agreement Program. Here, my recommendation to you is that we apply for funding for street improvements to a section of Brilliant Avenue and Brilliant Street and Hart Avenue. And there are a number of problems with this designated route. The route was surfaced with chip seal probably prior to 1990. There was a microseal added to that, I think in 1998. But we have reached pretty well the end of the useful life of that pavement surface. In addition, we have a large steel water line under this portion of Brilliant, which would reach from Tiger Drive to Hart Avenue and then the portion of Hart Avenue from Brilliant to South Second Street. And we've had a number of problems with the steel line over the years. Steel water line is subject to rust and corrosion and failure from, as a result of that corrosion. We've certainly seen that in this section. Over the years, we've replaced sections of steel line. This is one that's given us a lot of problems. Mr. Campbell has put together a project to replace that steel line along that route. That certainly is going to compromise the street, which is in poor condition anyway. You can see from the application that we estimate that we would need $100,000 of funding under this co-op agreement and you would commit 25% of that, or $25,000. Similar to the MAP project, we would get our share of the funds from the gas tax fund or whatever it is. And that's what you would be committing to with your approval of Resolution 2018-13.
Is there any further questions for Mr. Berry?
None.
Would entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll move to approve 2018-13, application for Cooperative Agreement Program, funding New Mexico Department of Transportation, District 4.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-13 to fund this co-op program. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Vance?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item J, deliberate an act on Resolution 2018-14, the January 2018 financial report. Mr. Berry, Michael Ann?
Mayor Protem, Mayor and Commission, I think under the next three items we have on the agenda are all treasure-related, so I would like to call on Michael Ann, Antunuchi City Treasurer, to begin with the financial report.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening, yes, the financial report through January 31, 2018. You will see that our ending general fund cash balance was $1,995,175 and then our available cash, less our reserve, is $1,596,218. The February grocery receipts tax, if you look at the attached report, you'll see that year-to-date, just comparing it with last year's GRT, we are down slightly over 5%. But because we did budget a decrease this year in our general fund, we are still showing a 5%... a 5.1% increase per what we budgeted. So we're still holding strong there. The next few months are some of the lower checks that we received throughout the years, so we'll probably start to see that percentage drop as we proceed through the end of the fiscal year. We should, now that the legislative session has ended, I would imagine in the next few weeks, we probably will get the small cities assistance check. So as you know, that's always kind of the big unknown, and so we do hope that with the state's budget improving and the oil and gas, that that check hopefully will be at least what we budgeted, if not more. So hopefully by the next meeting, or at least the second meeting in March, we'll have some more information on that. Also, you'll note in my report, we did have a slight reconciling issue this month, and it's because of our direct deposit. The actual date that we processed the payroll and had to fund the direct deposit was in the month of January, but the direct deposit date was February 1st. So the way our accounting system works, it'll correct itself. It kind of creates a due-to-do from between the various funds. However, we just processed payroll today, and we have the same issue. March 1st falls on a Thursday, and that's our direct deposit day. So we're going to have that same issue two months in a row. So anyway, but everything did reconcile with the bank. It's just our general ledger, the direct deposit kind of throws it out of balance. So other than that, we haven't had much grant activity, other than we'll be closing out the airport here in a few weeks, I believe, after the rest of the signage and the striping is done. I think I had reported at the last meeting that we had received those funds from the FAA, so we no longer have that negative balance that we did in the capital projects last month. So with that, unless there's any questions, I'd just recommend approval of the January financial report.
Any questions for Michael Ann? Any questions for Michael Ann?
None for me? No.
All righty, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve of the resolution 2018-14, January 18 financial report.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2018-14, approval of January 31, 2018 financial report. Any further discussion? Michael Ann, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Item K, deliberate enact on resolution 2018-15, fiscal year 18, budget adjustment number nine. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commission, if I could, I think I would like to reverse the order of these two action items, just simply because one of the adjustments is in regards to the Aquatic Center loan, so it probably would make more sense for you to take action on resolution 2018-16 first.
Okay, is there any objection to that?
No objection.
All righty.
No objection.
So item L will now become K, and it is the resolution 2018-16, the NMFA Aquatic Center Loan, fiscal year 18, additional debt payment. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commission, every year, we evaluate the balance in the fund where we make the annual debt payment against this, and it's the 2007 Aquatic Center loan. So the last couple of years, we've been making an additional principal payment of $150,000. Last year, we did end the year with a little bit of extra money accrued in that fund, and so we're recommending a little bit higher payment this year. And so after calculating what we estimate the balance to be at the end of this year, we'd like to maintain a $50,000 reserve in that fund, and I've estimated that we could make an additional principal payment this year of $210,000. So that's my recommendation to the commission.
Are there any questions for Michael Ann?
No question.
Okay, would you entertain?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2018-16, which is the additional debt payment for the Aquatic Center.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2018-16, the Aquatic Center loan for fiscal year 18, the additional payment. Any further discussion?
I might just add one more thing. We do have to give the New Mexico Finance Authority 45 days prior notice, and so that's why we do this early on. The actual payments are due as of May 1st.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call vote then, Michael Ann, please.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, item L now, act on resolution 2018-15, fiscal year 18, budget adjustment number nine. Michael Ann.
Okay, Mayor and Commission, the budget adjustment number nine, you'll see that we originally had budgeted for the normal $150,000 additional debt payment, so with your approval of the resolution to increase that to $210,000, I'll need to do a budget adjustment of $60,000 to those various line items. And then also, we are requesting one more adjustment for the tire recycling to finish that project.
And I'll just comment on that. In the tire recycling, where we're at is we've removed now close to 20,000 passenger tires from the transfer station. We do have some tires left out there that are larger size. They're semi tires and heavy equipment tires, and we'll come up with a solution for that. But we were set up to transfer the passenger tires, and it turned out to be a pretty large number. We're pretty cleaned up out there in the facility.
And these funds, the last budget adjustment, we just did the line item transfers, but this would come from the reserve of the sanitation fund.
Okay. Is there any further questions for Michael Ann? Would you entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2018-15, FY 18, budget adjustment number nine.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? We have a roll call vote, please, Michael Ann.
Just to clarify, was the mayor the second?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item M, finally, city manager's report.
Mayor Protem, Mayor and Commission, we did follow the outcome of the legislature, and at the meeting in Santa Rosa, that'll be one of the purposes of that meeting, is municipal league will talk about a lot of the legislation that municipalities are interested in, but I did want to update the commission as to capital outlay. The House and the Senate did agree to award $175,000 to the city of Raton, specific to public works, equipment replacement. We did get a call from, in regard to our readiness, our preparedness to expand those funds, that would be important if you were involved in selling bonds at the state level, and we indicated that we're ready. As soon as they can sell bonds, we would proceed with the first of equipment. But I do believe that the governor is still, would have to sign that capital outlay bill. I haven't seen where that has happened yet, but the indication is that they would plan to have this in the earliest bond sale for us, so I think we can expect approval of that funding. And I would like to say there, I'd like to express my appreciation to our state representative, Dennis Roche, who really, in regard to capital outlay and on other legislative support in the city of Raton, put out a lot of effort, not only this year, but in previous years. And Dennis did say that he was not running for reelection, that that state representative seat would be up for grabs and filled by someone else. But I was surprised to hear that Representative Roche has done that job for 10 years, and it's a difficult job, thankless job, and I just want to acknowledge his efforts on the effort at Raton. I've had some discussions with state aviation, our engineers, and also with federal aviation in regard to Phase 2 of the Taxiway Alpha project. As Michael Ann had said, we still have one task left to complete construction of Phase 1, that's pavement markings, striping, will need warmer weather, but FAA and state aviation have asked me to pass along to you that they are proposing a Phase 2 construction during the next year. That would consist of $750,000 of construction. City of Raton would be responsible for 5% of that construction cost, that's $37,500, or we can say $40,000. That would hit in the next budget, next fiscal year's budget, so we're to look forward to that. At the next meeting, I will bring you the engineering task orders, and we can consider that for the design of that Phase 2. Also, at the next meeting, I'll bring you documentation that I just received yesterday from Amtrak. This is an update on the exchange of the Raton Depot. You'll remember that we had considered a conveyance agreement and a lease agreement from BNSF earlier on the depot. In that document, it required concurrence of Amtrak, and what that's going to require is a lease agreement between Amtrak and city of Raton, and we would agree to operate the depot as, for rail passengers, specifically as an Amtrak stop. It's been a lengthy process to get this documentation from Amtrak. We did receive that yesterday. I'll have it in the packet for your consideration at the next meeting, and it would consist of a deed of easement and a lease agreement. So our funding through Federal Highway Administration is, we're right at the end of that funding. We need to show progress on that funding to maintain that, but we believe we can do that. We've had communications with federal highways also, and then proceed along with improvements to the depot. So we'll talk about that at the next meeting as well. I will be traveling to the meeting of New Mexico Funded on March 6th. That's going to be held in Albuquerque, along with Jason Phillips and Raton Main Street. We do have a presentation there of the Great Block project, our centerpiece project on First Street. We've been working on this for some time. We have about 40% of the funds in place now to construct that project, and we're going to look for sources for additional funding. So New Mexico Funded is a collaboration of agencies that meet in this setting to assist communities in accessing financing, and we present this project simultaneously to that group of agencies. So we will go down and present the project. You have the agenda in front of you. Then on March 7th, I'll stay in Albuquerque and attend an eight-hour safety training that's required of management by New Mexico Municipal League. Something that we do every year. I would conclude my comments, Mayor Protem, by stating that we have completed the improvements to the dispatch center that we had talked about. That was the grant funds, it was a little less than $60,000 to replace consoles, monitors, other equipment. It's a great project. We really have brought the level of that up. The dispatchers are really happy with the improvements there, and if commissioners have time, we'll show you the improvements there, but really great improvements to the 911 center. And then also, I would tell you that we have started placing water on some of the ballfields just because of the extreme dryness. Normally, we would wait till about the middle of March, but we've commenced today with watering some of those ballfields. That's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Is there any other comments from the board, from Mr. Berry, or anything?
I did, I did notice that the Profasi Corner is being destroyed as we speak, so that's moving forward on that, on that project.
Okay. Any other comments? Mayor Mance, as your last official duty, would you like to dismiss us?
Is there any other business to come before the commission?
Nobody shaking their head.
Okay. Seeing none, meaning adjourned.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.